At this time, I'll call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on earth and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We do have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item of business then would be to consider the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held on July 27, 2021. The council does have the minutes of that meeting as they were prepared. Are there any corrections?
Move approval, second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to approve the minutes as they were presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Agenda number three is a public hearing. This will be a public hearing related to the alley between South Bruce Street and South Minnesota Streets. So we'll have a public hearing on the resolution that would grant the petition to vacate that easement. And then, following the conclusion of the public hearing, then we'll consider the resolution that would grant the vacation of the easement and also grant the utility easement. So with us tonight is representative of the property owner, which is Alvera. But I will call on city engineer, director of public works, Jason Anderson, to conduct this public hearing. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Signed petition has been received from city staff for the reference. Can you hear me now?
Yep, you're on.
Can you hear me?
No.
Or he can go up to the podium.
Yeah. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. City staff did receive a signed petition for the vacation of the alley that was referenced by the mayor. We have followed the procedures outlined in the city ordinance regarding this. We've also contacted all of the utility companies to ensure that no one is left out in this request. Out of the recommendations, I would just add that we should probably, if we do adopt the resolution granting the petition to vacate the alley, we should do it conditional upon the acquisition of the following utility easement. That would be my only addition to the recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Is there any input as part of the public hearing? Kevin Schroeder is here representing Alvera. I assume, Kevin, you have no comments at this time?
No.
Make a motion to close the public hearing, second.
Motion by John, seconded by Russ to close the public hearing. Discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. You have the resolution before you that would grant the petition to vacate the alley. Any questions about the resolution? If not, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And then, the request is to grant of the utility easement. Is there a motion to that?
So move.
Second. Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, we'll move then to agenda number four. This will be a word of bids for the Legion Field Park River Stabilization Project. Again, presenting the bids will be Jason Anderson, city engineer. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a project to stabilize the riverbank near the park shelter in the southwest portion of the park. The riverbank has eroded to a point where it was threatening the water fill station, as well as the paving around the shelter, and it just continues to creep closer to the shelter. Staff worked to put together a project to reinforce this washout location. On August 4, bids were received for the project, and we received three bids. The low bid was received by ANC Excavating in the amount of $37,163.50. Project estimate was actually $65,000, so this is well under our estimate. We had $100,000 in the budget for this, as well as one other location, and that other location's since been removed. So staff would recommend a word.
Thank you, Jason. Questions?
I move awarding the bid.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. The time on this will be yet this fall, late summer, fall.
I actually think we put a deadline into next year on this project, so we're unsure. We'll have to work that out with our contractor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
There's a question about the previous item, also about discussion of the potentially of the utility easement?
We did act on that.
But was there anything else that needed to be said, Kevin? No, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. So we'll move then to agenda number five. This will be the authorize the city staff to award quotes for the curb and gutter replacement. This was previously discussed at a council meeting to authorize obtaining quotes, and you have received those quotes. Jason Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned at the July 13 meeting, we did make that request to the council. We have since received quotes. We received two, one from Hiskin Construction and one from Mush Construction of Pipestone. Hiskin Construction was the low-received quote, just slightly. We had competitive quotes there. The amounts were greater than the amount of money that we had allocated for this, so we would propose to adjust quantities to come down to the dollar figure that we'd like, which is $34,740, and not exceed that. So we'd recommend to award.
And these are all in locations where the streets would be overlaid next year?
Correct. All of these repairs will be isolated to the Westwood neighborhood.
Questions for Jason?
Jason, if we lower the bid down, we also have excess in our overlay and mill. We just don't do that many streets because the concrete came in low? Where we came, the bids came in high, excuse me?
Sure, yep. So what we would end up doing is, next year, we'll have to build in a couple additional locations, and we will have less money to overlay next year because of the little bit higher numbers. But anything we don't do this year, we'll do next year with the project.
Any other questions? If not, you have the recommendation. What are the wishes of the council?
I recommend approval of the bid.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And Jasmine, you had the vote. That motion does pass. We'll move then to the consent agenda. The items that are on the consent agenda this evening, we'll bring those up on the screen. They include calling for a public hearing regarding the proposed property tax abatement at 308 Athens, introduction of the amendment to the purchasing ordinance, the wastewater treatment facilities improvement project, consider the application payment to Magni Construction, as well as a payment invoice to Bolton and Mink, consider the approval of the sale of alcoholic beverages at Independence Lumber, or Independence Park Shelter in coordination with Relay for Life, consider the resolution certifying the unpaid fire service charges, consider a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed assessments for ice, snow, and weed elimination, consider the approval of temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Convention and Visitors Bureau, consider the current MOU with SMSU related to reporting of sexual assaults to the local law enforcement agency, consider the authorization to declare vehicles as surplus property for the Marshall Police Department, and to consider the approval of the bills and project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Number seven and number 10, please, Mr. Mayor.
Number six.
Any other item? If not, is there a motion for the remaining items on the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Don. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Agenda number six. Jim, you want to abstain from this?
I do.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Russ, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Agenda number seven, introduction of the amendment to the purchasing policy, purchasing ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'll just, I want to go on record that I applaud the staff for making all the changes, but I'm opposed to the $25,000 limit, so I will be voting no on this change. Thank you.
Any other questions about this item? If not, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Don. Discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Agenda number 10, consider the resolution certifying the unpaid fire service charges.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question on the second page, I believe, of the Schwan's Sales Enterprises Incorporated, the property owning property address assessment, $900, call for service vehicle fire. Was that a Schwan's vehicle, or was that a private individual? Because I find it hard to believe that we can't contact Schwan's and have them pay this bill prior to, and that's why I'm just curious.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I can address that. So it's a little bit of bad timing, is what it is. The invoice for that was sent like three weeks ago, and because of the administrative process and how this has to happen, is kind of why it got up there. There was a phone call made and some communication back and forth about, because of the buyout from Singus and all this other stuff, it's just kind of been confusing. And even on the Schwan's side, they're saying, we don't really know where to send this. And it is, it was one of their commercial freezer trucks that had ended up catching on fire that was plugged in in their storage area behind the depot. Thank you.
So it's more of a, more of a not sure who's going to pay the bill, whether it be Singus or?
Exactly. Correct. So we're trying to determine that with the finance director. She's been in communication with him on how to work it, but it's just basically up here as, it's just bad timing, really, just because of the way the process has to be.
So if it gets paid, it won't be on their tab.
Correct. That's correct. And the same for?
The other ones, I'm sure.
Exactly, except for the very top one, for Mr. Collins.
Yeah, I just, I just brought it up because I thought it would be, I mean, they are a major employer in town.
Correct, yes.
And I understand the confusion of whose responsibility for what.
And we, as a city, I mean, I don't know who's responsible. I mean, we have CJ and Singus, and I can't keep track of it.
Can they tell me, what, $900 of the ice cream?
I mean, I'd be willing to say. We have 15 people.
Yeah, we don't need cookies anymore. We're going to have ice cream.
Anything else?
My doctor would ask that I not partake in the ice cream beyond what I already have at home, so I'd be against that.
Thank you, Quentin.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, agenda number 16 is South Fourth Street Reconstruction Project. We have a resolution declaring the cost to be assessed and ordering the preparation of the proposed assessment, and a resolution for the hearing on the proposed assessment that would be held in September. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. The South Fourth Street Project was a 2020 project that consisted of the complete reconstruction of South Fourth from Country Club Drive to Elaine Avenue. In addition to street items like curb and gutter and the sidewalk, the project included the replacement of water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer systems. Included in the packet is the resolution declaring costs to be assessed and ordering the preparation of proposed assessments, as well as the resolution for hearing on the proposed assessment. And that sets the public hearing date for September 14. The assessment role was completed in accordance with the latest special assessment policy, and in the council memo, you'll note the cost breakdown by participating funding source. I can answer any questions if there are any.
Are there any questions for Jason? If not, there's two actions here. I'd entertain a motion on the resolution declaring the cost to be assessed and ordering the preparation of the proposed assessment.
I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And then the second action would be the resolution for the hearing setting that for September 14.
Go move, second.
Motion by Don, seconded by Craig. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Agenda number 17, similar action, this time on South First Street Reconstruction. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. South First Street Project was also a 2020 project, consisted of the complete reconstruction of South First from Southview Drive to George Street, along with some sanitary sewer improvements at First and De Shepherd. In addition to the street items and the addition of sidewalk on these three blocks, the project included replacement of water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer catch basin leads. Also included in the packet are the two resolutions, one declaring the cost to be assessed and ordering the preparation of assessments, and the other, the resolution for hearing on the assessment, and that sets the hearing for September 14 as well. Once again, assessment role was completed in accordance with the latest special assessment policy, and we've got a breakdown of participating funding sources in the memo. That's all I've got. We'd recommend to approve and adopt.
Any questions for Jason on this item?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment, and it's a good comment. As I look at this, we're assessing less than 15% of these projects to our property owners. I think that gives credit to us as a council and to our staff, that we're passing all this on to other things. Our citizens aren't being hit with high assessments, because I believe assessments have always been regressive. So I think that's good work on us as a council and previous council members on getting a very fair assessment policy in the city of Marshall.
Good comment, Jim. I think the other comment I would make, these were both very good projects. They were well managed. We had very good contractors. They were completed timely, and so ended up with a good product.
Agree.
Mr. Mayor, just a question, Jason, and I probably should have brought it up at the prior meeting too, but a prior issue. We still are going to address the grass on both of the projects later on this fall, just in case the property owners are listening or watching the meeting.
Yes, sooner than that. It might be within a week. Forgive me, I don't remember the date. Jesse's on top of that. It's going to be done in, I think, one to two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and just, when you say grass, because it really makes no sense to seed until we start getting rain.
Correct. Yeah. It was, it was important for our seeding contractor to wait until we got into what we call the seeding window.
Well, let's hope we get rain.
We'll be there soon, and you're right, we need a little moisture.
Yeah.
Any other input or questions? If not, is there a motion for the resolution declaring the cost to be assessed in preparation of the proposed assessment?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And then the second action would be the resolution calling for the hearing on the proposed assessment.
So move.
Motion by Don, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Agenda number 18, the Independence Park Project. So this relates to the trail replacement, and the action requested is consider the authorization to advertise for the bids for the trail replacement, and consider the proposal from Bolton and Mink for the stormwater pond expansion. Jason, we'll turn to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is kind of two different items that we lumped together because they're interrelated and figured it was easier to just talk to them, talk about them as one. So we'll start with the trail. And the trail in the park is a bituminous surface trail. It's approximately 10 feet wide that travels through the entirety of the park. The trail pavement's in poor condition, and several areas do not meet ADA requirements. There's numerous locations where surface defects make the trail difficult to travel, and numerous other locations where the cross slopes or side slopes of the trail are severe, and that results in pretty hazardous conditions at times. Because of that, community services staff and engineering staff have put together plans to replace the majority of the trail in that park with a new concrete surfacing. The width of the trail would be 10 feet for the majority of it, with some sections that would be eight and six feet. On the drawing that Jasmine's pulling up for us here, the yellow area in the center island, we're proposing at eight feet. The majority of the green is at least 10, with exception to the northeast part of the project where the trail leads up to the horseshoe area. That's, that's six feet in our plans. Further, in addition to that, city staff believes it'd be prudent to complete a pond for bay expansion project in coordination with the trail project, and that's shown on the diagram as well with the ponding area on the south end of the park. The for bay expansion would create additional pond storage volume, while also creating a ponding environment that promotes settling of solids into that for bay, making it easier to clean and reducing the amount of area that we have to clean at later dates down the road. So to help accomplish the goal of having an August 2022 completion for this project, staff's proposing to separate the trail replacement project from the pond expansion project. Essentially have one project that's most of the area up there, and the other is just the pond, as well as the culvert crossing and the yellow trail around the culvert crossing on the drawing there. That would all be one project, while the rest of the green and yellow trail is another project. To help us get that done, we'd propose to hire Bolton and Mink of Mankato for the stormwater pond expansion design. They've provided us with a proposal in the amount of, not to exceed $10,000, and that covers the cost of design for the pond expansion, the outlet structure, and the trail connection over that culvert. The engineer's estimate for the construction of the trail project is $532,800, and that includes some contingency and engineering costs. The estimate for the pond expansion is $189,000, and the majority of that would be funded through the surface water management utility, with exception to the trail connection piece. So there's two recommendations from staff to the council tonight. One's to authorize us to bid the trail project immediately, and the other's to accept the proposal from Bolton and Mink and allow us to keep moving down the path of designing the pond expansion portion of the project. Both projects with the goal of being completed the end of July next year. So that's our proposal, and if council authorizes us to move forward, we would propose to accept bids on the 24th, and come the morning of the 24th, and come to the council that night with an award recommendation. That's the most expedited process we can provide, and we think that that gives the best opportunity to really get the best prices and still get this project done on the timeline proposed for next year.
And there's adequate time to advertise and get interest from the potential contractors.
Just enough.
Very good. Okay, questions?
Jason, I just have one, and it's pretty minor, but I know that that pond expansion, that's currently kind of just a cattail wetland area now, correct? It's kind of at the bottom toe of the sliding hill?
That is correct. It's at the bottom toe of the sliding hill, and we propose to move the current trail crossing and culvert crossing further to the north, opening up room to expand that pond.
Okay. And then there'll be some catch vegetation or something put in there before sliding season to keep the kids from scooting out onto a broken ice pond?
Yeah, it'll be the same type of situation as there is today. We've got strict orders not to get any closer to the sliding hill, but that's the direction that we're operating under now. I should also mention that the sewer project that we've awarded for this year on the other side of 23, near Runnings and Midwest Bank, is also paving the way for this project because we're eliminating a sanitary sewer crossing that would be in the way of this expansion. So we've kind of started to lay the groundwork for this pond expansion, and we think now's a really good time to do that project.
And there'll be some tree relocation because of the pond expansion?
Absolutely.
Other questions?
Jason, three quarters of the way down the memo for council says, and this is a surprise to me, the area surrounding the ball field concessions, building in the ball field seating areas proposed to be replaced with concrete. First time I've heard this is tonight. Is that part of the trail project? My second question, how is this going to be paid for?
Great questions. I'll start with the first one. In working with community services and park staff, engineering staff was directed to include some of this area around the concession building and ballpark area, and we can maybe pan over there. Thanks, Jasmine. You see the green area that's identified around those ball fields? That's the outline of what we would propose to make concrete around that building. The bituminous surfacing is sufficiently aged, and it probably makes sense. It also adds a little more paving under the bleachers area. It makes a better, a better place for the folks who come to these tournaments and games to congregate around the ball fields. Also proposed is the fencing around that concession area would be removed, and all that gravel would be removed and seeded back to grass, which in our conversations with community services team, it seems to be that they feel like it'll make it have more of a, just a nicer look to it, I guess, if you, if you clean up some of that. From a stormwater standpoint, it'll be a little better for stormwater, because when it rains, you'll see all the murky water running off of this area into the catch basins and over to the pond.
Are there any other parks in town that have concrete up around this area, around the ball fields?
The new ball field complex.
Is it concrete, or is that pavers?
Concrete and pavers. When you get right next to the fields, it's pavers, like a retaining wall and paver legs.
Do they check with the baseball association to see what they would like? I mean, just if they want concrete, or?
I do believe that park staff has been in contact with the association. That's where the recommendation to remove some of the fencing has come from.
I just don't think it needs to be concrete. I think, I think that's a total waste of money. Yeah.
Other questions?
Second pardon, how are we going to pay for it?
Sorry. I don't know if Annette wants to help me out with that portion.
I think Councilman Lozinski brought that up last meeting, that half the liquor store funds were going to go to reduce the levy and half maybe to trails?
I brought some of that up. Yes, that's all for discussion.
Right, right. So I'm just saying accordingly, accordingly, this exceeds the excess amount in the liquor store fund. So.
Great question. Good evening, Mayor and Council. At this time, staff is recommending that the majority of the project is paid with the liquor store revenue. We will bring out actual formal recommendation when we actually have the bid numbers to solidify our final recommendation. But for the majority of the project, it will come from the liquor store proceeds, is our current direction.
Will there be any donations from the baseball association? Do we know? Have we, I mean, have they come forward and said if you, if they've conversed with them, have they said anything about we're willing to pay or donate? I mean, I realize they've donated other money to projects within the parks and stuff, so I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, it's a good question. I believe that park staff have been in contact with the association. I think the general consensus is that they'll continue to work and receive donations towards other improvements around the ball fields, and as they, as they typically do. I think there may be participating in a batting cage addition or moving out there as well right now. I think that that'll probably have more of an impact, and that was the thought of the Parks Department, that those types of improvements can really go a long ways with what their, their budget amount is.
So, and I hate to dwell on this, but even around Legion Field, where the A's play in amateur baseball, that's all asphalt. That's not concrete, is it?
That's pavers.
Is it pavers up around there? Is that all pavers?
And there is some bituminous back there, some asphalt paving behind the ball field. Yeah.
Those pavers are installed by Preston too, because I know pavers would be more expensive than concrete, except I think Preston himself does the labor to bring the cost down, correct? I know with the new ball fields, he did a lot of paperwork out there.
At Legion, there was some other volunteer effort that went into there.
With pavers.
I should note that, you know, the cost difference between concrete and bituminous gets pretty narrow when you start working in these small areas and with small quantity. You're, you're probably money ahead to look at concrete for the longevity and the price difference.
Well, there will be some phasing, I understand too. So, you know, when, you know, we're dealing with estimates now, and in, when the bids come in at the next council meeting, we'll be dealing with real numbers, so.
Right. The, the point about phasing is pretty important. I think that what we have bid into the project or built in is a phase one and a phase two for the trail, and the phase one is around the ball fields, with the idea that it'd be great if a contractor could come in, in the fall, when baseball's done, and get all the work done around the fields. That way, they're ready to go in the spring. Conversely, if they have to come in in the spring, we'll want them to try to work. Conversely, if they have to come in in the spring, we'll want them to try to work around and and make sure there's as little disruption as possible, but the idea is that that's got to get done first.
And in terms of the funding question, too, there's also discussion with Perry Home Hospice and, you know, where they use the facility for light up the night, and there may be some participation there.
Yeah, exactly. I believe Community Services is working on the donation end.
Mr. Mayor, one last question, Jason, and maybe for you, Mr. Mayor. I think a few meetings ago, you you asked city engineering to maybe come with a proposal that would do part of the trail project in concrete and maybe consider part of it in asphalt. Is that still under consideration or not?
Do you want to respond to that?
Yes, I can. And that's we we did hear that loud and clear. As we were putting the plans together, we just really felt strongly that it made the most sense to have a concrete trail in here for the the cost difference and the longevity. We think that it really pans out for the city to have concrete here. While we respect the the idea to bid them both, we we strongly encourage the council to bid just concrete, although if directed otherwise, we can certainly put into put anything into motion. We we just don't recommend it. We think that it can lead to uncertainty at award time and maybe conflict with different industries when you're choosing one or the other, and maybe you don't have a a very well-established method for choosing one or the other.
There there also is a difference in the preparation of the base that.
Correct.
Complicate the plans.
It it does usually complicate the plans when you bid one section against the other because the sections are usually different, and it changes a lot of quantities, and it adds a lot of extra burden on the plan design.
John?
I just point out on that discussion, since they do spend quite a bit of time in this park, you look at the the cement sidewalk that goes along Lyon, and I realize that, you know, the base is different there than when the path was put in, but the length of time that that sidewalk has been in, and there are a few cracks, but it's in very good serviceable condition. Whereas you look at the path that had the bituminous layer on it, there are literally patches on patches on patches. I mean, it's been many times gone in there to be fixed up. You know, it breaks away the, you know, moisture from whatever the bottom. I I think from maintenance-wise longevity, like you're saying, I would be very much in favor of the the concrete in there. I think we get much better results out of that, and that's why we put it in a number of our heavy streets, just for that same reason. There's going to be traffic on here. We, you know, hospice uses it for a ride through on that or around there. It's worth putting the the concrete in there.
Other input? If not, thank you, Jason. So we have several actions to to consider. One is the question and the recommendation to authorize, advertise for the bids for the trails.
I would make the motion to authorize the bidding for the trails.
Got it.
Motion by John, seconded by Don. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, does that include the concrete for by the concession building?
Everything would be in one.
Is that included?
As a package.
Thank you.
I'm going to say at this time, I'll support this to get the bids so we can have further discussion on August 24th, because with outnumbers, it's hard to have the discussion. But on to Russ's point, can we maybe take out and have that bid as an alternative by the concession stand, just so we know what the extra cost is?
I think I think we could probably do that. We already have one alternate in the bid, and I should have pointed that out. The the wide bituminous route from Lyon up to the gazebo shelter area, the large shelter, that's already in there as an alternate right now with an estimated cost of around $75,000, I believe. We left that out and wanted to see what the numbers were because that was resurfaced within the past five or six years, and we felt like that 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 could wait if it if it had to and likely would need to when with project costs. I'll meet with our team. I think we probably could add another alternate.
Thank you.
Is that acceptable with the motion and the second?
That is acceptable with me.
Okay, so that's assumed in the motion. Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Then the second action would be the proposal from Bolton and Mink for the pond expansion engineering. Questions about this recommendation?
I move the proposal.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number 19. Consider the resolution ordering the abatement of several hazardous buildings located in Broadmore Valley Mobile Home Park in the city of Marshall. Dennis, are you going to start with this?
I can start with this, yes.
Dennis Simpson, city engineer.
Or and attorney, either one.
And attorney.
That's kind of a long day. That's a good promotion.
So you're billing this at a lower rate?
As has been discussed recently at several council meetings, following a presentation from some of the Broadmore Valley residents, city inspection, city attorney have taken a look at some properties, and it all starts with a council order. An order has been prepared for the council to consider, and it's requesting the raising and removal of four properties out at Broadmore Valley. I had asked our building inspector, Ilya Guzman, to go find basically find the worst properties that cannot be repaired, that have been sitting vacant for a significant period of time. There are photographs included, and we've got some of these properties going back to 2017, where we've had that they're uninhabited. One of them recently was burned, but, you know, we've got this property, 327 Timberlane, has been vacant. You know, we're on four years now. You can see the windows are boarded up. Nothing has been done. So we've selected four properties, basically, that need to be removed. I think we owe it to the residents to take some action. This would require that they in some one of these properties you'll see has been wrapped in Tyvek paper since 2019. I'm assuming it's they're trying to repair it, but it's in worse condition now than it was when we first started looking at this property. One of them recently had a fire in it. You'll see the windows were broken, then they're boarded up, and here's the fire. But probably Quentin, you probably responded to this recently, I think this one. So we're asking for an order from the council ordering the property owner to get rid of these four properties. It will be the intention as a second action to proceed with an administrative search warrant to let us view other properties that may have additional problems but may be repairable. Right now, we're just asking for permission to advise the order the property owner to remove these dilapidated hazardous substandard buildings.
So the four properties, there's that issue.
Yes.
The administrative search warrant as city attorney, do you have the authorization to do that, or do you need direction from the council for that?
No, that would proceed with the search warrant based that would through my office. Then, once we have the information from the search warrant, that would come back to the council, yes, for additional action. But I think we need to start with something, and that's what this action is intended to do.
So the the second action would address the other properties that were identified by the association in the presentation, as well as the inspection by building inspector.
Correct. Yes, we have identified 17 properties in total that hopefully will be addressed by an order in the near future.
Okay, questions?
Karen, do you have anything you want to add?
No.
I move the resolution ordering the abatement of the four buildings located in Broadmore Valley Mobile Home Park in the city of Marshall.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dennis?
Nothing else.
Good. We'll move then to agenda item number 20, calling for a public hearing on the proposed property tax abatement at 310 Athens. This is a motion only to call for the public hearing. Are there questions about this item?
I move the request for public hearing for proposed property tax abatement at 310 Athens.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Don. Discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I have to abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Thank you.
Well, note one abstention. Agenda item number 21, calling for a public hearing on proposed property tax abatement. This addresses 505 Darlene Drive. Is there a motion to call for this public hearing?
So I'll move.
Seconded by John, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I also have to abstain.
One motion passes with one abstention. We'll move then to the next agenda item, consider appointments to various boards, commissions and authority. Prior to tonight, the council met in two special sessions to interview applicants for various boards and commissions, and based on on those applicants and the interviews, I would recommend that Sar Rapanah be appointed to the library board for an expired term. That term will end December 31, 2022. That Kelly Wasberg be appointed to the police advisory board for an unexpired term that will expire May 31, 2023, and that Janelle Saylor be appointed to the public housing commission for a term that would expire May 31, 2026. I'd offer that as a recommendation to the council and entertain a motion to affirm.
Go move.
Motion by Don, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is agenda item number 22, Commission Board Liaison Reports, actually might have not met since we last met.
I have nothing.
Don?
The Public Housing Commission met yesterday afternoon. I was able to attend this time around. General customary work going on, checking the eight or nine month financial, working on the budget, keeping an eye on a couple of projects that they've got, the the elevator and the fire alarm system. Also did ask yesterday about the anticipated assessment that they will be due due to the project on North First and that area from the sewer and and road project going on there, and they are anticipating an assessment of in the neighborhood of $50,000 from the city. So those items are all being looked at and discussed. Planning Commission has a meeting next week, but it has been postponed since there are no items on the agenda next week. So that's all I have.
Okay, John?
EDA and MMU have not met since our last meeting. As far as Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Commission, there's only been subcommittee meetings in preparation for Welcoming Week, which we talked about last meeting. It's been pinpointed more of a date, September 18th. That will be actually a nice busy day to do that. It's really working in conjunction with YMCA. They've got a few things going on. Be located at the YMCA and a number of events that starting out at that time and a few of them progressing on through the week. So more to come, but let's keep that date in mind, September 18th.
Thank you, John. Russ?
Might have not met, Mr. Mayor.
And Jim?
Might have not met.
We'll move then to council member individual items. Jim?
I have a whole bunch of stuff tonight. To start out with, first of all, City Hall has we have not moved forward with anything on that, so I'll just we'll meet next week. Friday, myself, Craig Schaefer, Administrator Hanson and EDA Director Lauren Deitz went on a little fact-finding mission up to Wilmer. A good a good visit. We stopped at two different apartment complexes, which are owned by two different developers up there, which also developed Marshall, which was was very interesting, the amenities that they're offering in their apartments up there. Then we stopped at the third one, and this is kind of to you, Don. Is there housing there? What was it? Rivercrest, the third one we stopped at. That's the Wilmer Housing Authority has pulled up a new apartment building, very nice for through HUD. Is that something maybe we could approach our Marshall Housing Authority to look into? Because we always talk about low income cost effective housing, while Wilmer's doing this, and it's right off of 23. If you go through Wilmer, you can see it right off of 23.
It's right by the Pizza Ranch.
Right by the Pizza Ranch. So it's just something maybe we can look into, help addressing our workforce housing too. Obviously, HUD has money to do it because they did it there. So it was kind of interesting looking at those different apartments and the things that Wilmer has done with their developers. The second place we stopped, which was new to me, but it was called the Destination Park. For those who feel familiar with Wilmer, it's called the Robins Island, and I know Preston had brought up at budget meetings about, you know, we need to step up our game in our parks. And I, you know, to me, I don't have kids anymore, so it's like, well, I think our parks looks nice. We went into this this Destination Park in Robins Island, and this was like, wow, this is a nice facility. And and Craig and I, okay, we were a little creepy, asking little kids if they liked the park.
You were creepy than I was.
You asked, I didn't. But it was, you know, the daycare was there, and for Friday morning, this park was full of kids from around the area, and this park is 100% ADA compliant. It had different stuff set up for children with autism, and it was just they call it, I believe they call it Destination Park. And there there was a city staff member that we got to quiz. We kind of pinned him in a corner in a gazebo, but he said there's people coming 40, 50 miles away to play in this park. It is a million dollar investment, but it would in Wilmer is completely raised, and Bob, you can help me on this, but it was private donations that built this park, correct? So I think when Preston brought that up, he does have a valid point. If we want families, we want people, children in Marshall, we need to look at these amenities that these other communities and around us are now doing. So and then we stopped, they also had, Preston had brought up, like an enclosed gazebo, which Wilmer had just built one, too. That's actually where the city, nice city employee gave us tour of their gazebo, their year-round facility, and there could be use for that in Marshall. I mean, I'm not saying let's build it this year or next year, but they got a grant for the DNR to do theirs. So there's grants out there, there's stuff out there, and it was it was nice, and we weren't overly impressed with it. I mean, there's design stuff that we definitely do different, you learn from other people's building. But again, if we're going to be competitive with other communities, these are the things we need to look at doing, and it was a good. Where's the other place? It was just those three we stopped at, right?
The Dairy Queen?
We won't bring up the Dairy Queen. So because because they could not get our order right, and our city administrator went to bat for us trying to get my order right, so I appreciate that.
My order was perfect.
So but it was a good it was a good experience to see what other communities in our area are doing, and to attract people, I think that's very, very important to do because we need to, I mean, we're competing with Wilmer for for citizens. I mean, we really are. And I don't know, I'm assuming Brookings may be doing something similar to this, and, you know, other communities are, so it was well worth the trip up there, and it was well worth the trip and looking at the different housing options they have. I mean, the one apartment we went into, the developer gave us a code and free rein to wander through his new buildings, so it was kind of nice. They have community rooms where you could rent out with with, you know, your community, and they have it was just it was nice, a nice community apartment, which Lauren, she's not here tonight, will say that would fit right into our housing needs, perfect in Marshall, and we just got to work with people to get it here. I think we owe it to our residents to step up what we have for them to live in, and yes, it all involves some type of TIF financing or tax abatement or something, but that's the name of the game, is is to get these nicer units, so. The second thing I want to address, I know Dr. Meister brought it up two weeks ago, but it's the rhetoric going around in the community, and it is to be nice. On Saturday, my son and his husband were here in Marshall, and unfortunately, they had some very rude derogatory comments slung at them. Their response is, we'll never go back to Marshall, which unfortunately chases away all my other children, which chases away more people. I don't understand why accepting people for who they are, how they are, or who they love is such a hard thing to do in this community. I think we, as a council, need to need to. I think we, as a council, need to, need to show our underrepresented communities that we're here to support them, because it's not just, I have a Hispanic roofing crew, and the stuff that they've been yelled at on the ground, when they're working in town here is ridiculous. It does nothing but hurt our community, and to our community members, it does nothing but hurt our community when we do stuff like that. I have a son that will not come back to Marshall, no, and that just disgusts me. So on that, you're next, Russ.
Hard act to follow, Jim. I'm sorry to hear that your son had that experience at town and the rest of the family, but knowing how fiscally conservative you are, I can see why Sharon had a difficult time trying to tell that person at the Dairy Queen to split that blizzard four ways. I can, I can just, I can just only comprehend how long that took her to explain.
I got three quarters.
I'm sure. Yeah, well, anyway, my comments are to Dennis, and Dennis, you don't have to respond tonight, but I think sometime in the next month or so, probably give us an update on Helena. I know that's been a thorn in everybody's side for a long time. I know we talked at a committee meeting a while back that the building that we thought was somewhat usable is getting to the point maybe of not being usable anymore, so maybe what our offer was and things like that, maybe that has to change, I don't know. The other thing is that hockey season will soon be here. The Maha contract, I think, as, God forbid, we have COVID come back and, you know, put kiboshes to everything, but I think that Maha contract was expiring sometime ago, and we were looking at it, you know, a couple of years ago, so.
It will be back the first meeting in September.
Okay.
We've had some recent discussions with that group, and they have to get me some additional proposed language, but I will be set to go on.
I knew you were working on it, and I know you're busy, so we got more important, but I just.
Cross that off my list.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else, Russ?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, John?
Well, Jim, a couple of things. Thanks for two good lead-ins for me. One is the, what I mentioned before, the welcoming week, which is coming up on September 18th, is under the Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission, and it is really just for that instance like that, to have people come. There will be a World Cafe to talk about some of their experiences and get some of that information out, because yes, we need to be a welcoming committee, or welcoming community, and want to bring that. The other part of it is on the inclusive playground. It's a good lead-in, because on Sounds of Summer Saturday morning, throw a plug in for the rotary pancake breakfast, because we're having that at the Fire Hall, and tickets are available from, directly from myself or Sharon, who's, Sharon's probably got more of them left than I do, maybe. But the funding that we raise is going to the inclusive park that we're having here, so just if you listen to what Jim was talking about and want to come out and support that park, come on out and have some pancakes, so, very good. Yeah, Jim, I guess you'd probably have some tickets too. You got a little bit more force behind yours, you can.
We hands-on tickets all the time, what are you talking about?
These are, these are different tickets than what Jim Marshall hands-on.
Can we hit a million dollars at the first pancake feed to build this playground?
If you keep driving.
Well, you want to buy a lot of tickets, we're great.
Not those tickets, Craig, pancake tickets.
So that's about it, Mayor, so.
Okay, thanks, John. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, I just want to reiterate what Jim said, it was a really worthwhile trip on Friday. Sorry about the experience your son and his husband had, that's pretty frustrating. I, I'd get on my soapbox and talk about that, but I'm not going to do it here, but it is for a community discussion, and I hope people think about who they are, where they are, and why they are, and understand that they need to worry a little bit more about themselves.
Don?
No comment.
So just a couple of follow-up items, and again, the field trip to Wilmer, I think that's, that was of value, will be of value to all of us. The inclusive playground at Robins Island, I know a little bit about that, because a staff, prior to my retirement, a staff that I supervised was the co-chair of that, and it was actually a community build, so not only was it a million dollars, but it was also a community build project, so they came together in one week and did the whole build, so. So that's, that actually was part of a transformation of that park, which was a kind of a troubled area before. It's, you know, there was a lot of sketchy activity that was occurring at that park. There's a lot of wooded areas, some hills by the lake, and it did help to really transform that park. That, this, you also mentioned the grant that they received from DNR that helped partially fund the shelter building that they built. The, the local match was provided by their local option sales tax. Their DNR grant was, they were eligible for that, because DNR designated their Robins Island Park as a regional park, so that really worked in their, their advantage.
And Bob, you know, I bring up community thing, I think if I remember the sign correctly, there was 3,972 volunteers, so one-fifth of Wilmer's population volunteered on that park. So I just want to throw it, there was 3,972 volunteers.
It was a huge effort, and it was, it rained during that time.
But I don't know.
But they had all, all parts of the community, all ethnicities were represented, so it really was a, the park turned out good, but the experience of, of building the park was really a positive thing for that community also. The, the other thing I was going to say, and this kind of leads back to some previous discussions about event planning and Sounds of Summer, which of course is coming up, but next year, Sounds of Summer will be in conjunction with the 150th celebration of City of Marshall. This 150th Planning Committee has been meeting frequently, they've divided into subcommittees, and so there's, there's still room for more people to be involved in the planning, but, you know, lots of good effort that's going in on that, and hopefully, I'm hopeful that within a month, that we can kind of do a report out to the council, what some of those preliminary plans would be, probably shortly after this year, Sounds of Summer, that report out would be appropriate. With that, I'll move then to the next item, which would be a staff report. Sharon?
Yes, I'm just going to comment a little bit on the Diversity Commission. We've had some really productive meetings, and we've talked about communication and response, and we know that there are different incidences and activities that may not have gone as planned, or there has been some, you know, unfortunate statements made and, or actions. And if we thought just forming the commission was going to solve all of it, we would have done it a long time ago. So it isn't the end-all, be-all solution to kind of where we're at with a, as a community. And I remember reading an article about a metro city that has a, kind of a diversity commission within their police department, and, and they were being criticized for taking too long and not getting things accomplished and, and bringing us together as a community, and, and the staff person said, well, you know, the police department has been around for 100 years, and we've only been here two years, can you give us a little time? And that's how I kind of feel a little bit about our Diversity Commission, and, but we are going to have a discussion a little bit further on how to respond to certain things. Our key goal has been awareness and building human relationships, because I firmly believe it's not a, a department within the city necessarily we need to focus in on, it's, it's really our kitchen tables and how we grow up as individuals, and, and, and no matter what your age, we, we still need to grow up, and it's, you know, so hopefully, we can just give us some time, and hopefully, we can do some, some really good things. But I, I do think it's going to take longer than this year, and, you know, it may take many years before we can get to where we need to be, so I want to comment on that. Wanted to mention, just, I mean, I can't explain a lot, because this is confidential, but we did meet with a developer on Block 11. This would be a new proposal. I know it's been sitting for quite some time, but we did that this week, and, and we feel pretty good about it, actually. There's some interest, they, what really makes this particular concept good for Block 11 is they're in similar-sized cities, and they gave us some examples, and we may do some sightseeing for those as well, similar to what Councilmember Lizinski mentioned on Wilmer. And to follow up on Councilmember Labatt's question on Maha, we did actually just meet with Maha, this is our Community Services Director and myself on Monday, yeah, so just yesterday, and Dean, as, as the city attorney mentioned, he, he still needs to get the language. They're proposing some new language for the concession agreement, which I think the council will be agreeable to, and I don't think the rates, rental rates are going to change a lot from what was previously mentioned, but they're going to give you some statistics on kind of usage and comparable with other communities, and there's still the Zamboni partnership that they want to propose too, so yes, the goal is September 14, and we just need to get some of that to the city attorney. One final thing, we are still communicating on sales tax revenue, Aquatic Center, and we're still planning on that community survey, which the council agreed to do. It may be the first week in October, we're finalizing some questions to prioritize projects, potentially an inclusive playground could be one of these questions. Would the community support this, and where does it rank with everything else? I think we will include that, and that'll help kind of bring us forward into what our priority is going to be in park and recreation, beyond a lot of things that we're doing already. But we also did visit with Senator Dames today. He is a key link for us, because we need legislative approval, and one of the things we mentioned is, you know, we're really going to try hard to, to get working on this for 2022, but in any given legislative session, you never know what may happen. In 2020, they didn't consider any of these sales tax requests, or they put them on the back burner and didn't approve them, so, but it was a really, really good discussion with him, and I know one of the things we talked about at the end of that meeting was redistricting, and, and I know county had a presentation from their auditor treasurer, and, and we'll be working with the county on that, but that's important, not only locally, but for our legislative districts too, they're going to have to change. I know Senator Dames mentioned that for his represented Senate district, the, he lost 3,500 people in that district, so there's going to be movement. We may lose rural Senate and House seats, which is unfortunate for us as a community, because we bind, bind, bind together as, as rural communities, and, you know, we had a really good relationship with our local legislators, and, and it'll be interesting to see kind of what happens after that redistricting takes place. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Question for Sharon? Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Got a handful of items. Was contacted by MnDOT today, and was given notice that the concrete grinding and panel replacement project that was scheduled to occur along 59 from Highway 23 to County Road 6 will no longer occur this year. They ran into some funding issues with the project, they, I think the southern portion of the project was running a little higher cost than expected, and our portion will be delayed because of that, so that project will not happen. You may remember the detour was going to be along Saratoga Street, so that'll no longer be the, the case. North First Street, the project downtown, we're expecting paving next week, at this point, they're saying Monday. We did coordinate some bridge work with MnDOT there too, while we had the bridge deck exposed, so that went well. James Camden, we are, should have sidewalk port tomorrow, so they're continuing to work on concrete work. State aid overlay project's going fairly well, moving along, a lot of curb ramp work occurring. Right now, I believe the, around August 25th is when they're scheduling the mill to come in next, and paving to resume thereafter, so we're hopeful that Southview Drive will be paved before school starts. That's been a priority, and I know that our team's been trying to stress that, and I think, I think Dunick understands that, and is trying to accommodate that as they can. The Independence Park Sewer Realignment Project should be starting up soon, and MnDOT College Drive Open House is tomorrow night at the library from 5:00 to 6:30, so if you'd like to come and see, and if any citizens are listening and want to go give input, that's, there's an opportunity tomorrow night. City staff had an input session on Monday night regarding the Fourth and Country Club intersection, and Councilman Labatt and De Kramer were present, and it was a good, a good session. We had a better turnout for this one than we did for the line and third session. Seemed to have general support for the improvement that was proposed by SEH and the city staff, so that, that was good to hear. I think we can feel fairly confident moving forward that that'll be the, the project that we'd like to move forward with, but we'll continue to bring that forward to council as we, as we draw near. Lastly, staff met with SRF to have a comp plan kickoff meeting recently, and we're working on setting up a visit and tour date with them, and try to get them set up with different people to speak with and interview and have conversations with, so that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Broadmoor Valley will continue to process that matter. The order that you signed tonight, we have to make sure that it's properly served on property owner, and we'll post notice on the facilities, we have to also publish if we don't know, but we'll just take care of the service of that. Jason, I did review the Bolton Mint contract that was sent over, so that's ready to go as well, and I'll get an update for you, Mr. Labatt, on Helena, that'll be available. And there are discussions concerning the potential purchase of some additional storage facilities within the city, and a purchase agreement's been prepared and submitted to the owner, so we'll keep you advised of that.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. We'll move then to the remaining items, that includes the administrative brief for your review, the information items, which includes the building permits, and the upcoming meetings. Any comments on any of those items? Is there anything else to come forward this evening?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to put a plug in for Sounds of Summer next week. I know various council members and people have brought that up, but again, after last year, I think everybody's looking for a, a good and safe celebration, and we hope that continues. Starts off on Thursday night with Relay for Life, and then, of course, Saturday, we have the parade and the best $8 hamburger you're going to have with, made by the Fire Department, but, you know, the parade.
And pancakes.
And pancakes in the morning, sorry.
A million dollars in pancakes, man.
Yeah.
But, you know, just, just our grand marshals for this year are Tim and Donna Swenson, and it's a, it's a way to showcase them and their commitment and their dedication to the community of Marshall and the products that they have done and they've made and serviced worldwide, so encourage, if you can, to take, partake in any events that you can, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Russ. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Don to adjourn. Discussion? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, we are adjourned.